Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, Linda? Declarations of conflicts of interest, anyone?
No.
And approval of agenda additions or deletions? We are deleting 7G. Any other additions or deletions? And I need a motion to approve the agenda with the change. Moved, seconded. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. So we have with us, what a treat. We have John McKinnon with us, Nova Scotia International Student Program. And John, welcome. I know we've been trying for some time to get you here. But we're glad to have you. And John, if you want to just make sure you speak into the microphone because this is all, it's all live streamed, so you can go back tonight and watch yourself on, on the computer.
That'll be a treat.
(laughing)
Thank you very much for inviting me in. It's been a while, I've been trying to present about this, to just bring you guys up to date on, on the Nova Scotia International Student Program. I'll just, I'll go through my slideshow and then Jeff's asked me to do a quick demonstration following that. It's enter, right Jeff?
Uh, or the arrow key.
Okay, or the arrow keys? Okay, thanks. So as I said, with the Nova Scotia International Student Program, which is a program that came into being in 1997, they made some changes that allowed us to invite students from all around the world into Nova Scotia as tuition-paying students. But the, the goal really was to try to globalize or diversify our, our schools. It was noticed that, that for the most part, our schools, as, as we developed, our schools didn't represent the world, and we thought they should, and with the hope that our students would have a chance to, to learn more about the world in a firsthand manner. Jerry Pittman actually was one of the founding directors of the International Student Program when we were backing the Southwest Regional School Board. The program had one student in 1999, and has grown to over a thousand full-time students in, in just seventeen years now, and it's in all seven school boards. It originally was basically Shignektow and Southwest. As I mentioned up here, originally we were an education program, but as, as time has gone on, and Carolyn Boliver-Ketson has had me talking to my ear all the time, we now, I now see it more as a community development program. There's a, the, the source is the Canadian Education Centre Network, and they estimate that twenty-one, that an international student brings in $21,000, this is a high school student, $21,000 into a community. For our province alone, we bring in $18 million into the province for the, with the International Student Program. And these are in accommodation, insurance, entertainment, tuition, money paid to families' home stays, and transportation. For Yarmouth, what that means is, for accommodation alone, that's just the money we spend, we, we pay for home stays, it's $315,000, and, and that's all locally spent money. As I said, Carolyn's been the one that's been kind of explaining the, the finance side of it to me, and why this is a little different than other programs. And that is because we pay directly to the home stays, that money that comes in, all the money you see, is actually spent locally. This money, for example, the 315 would, would be, we pay our, our monthly home stay compensation of 525, so all that money goes into food, gas, whatever it takes for a teenager at that, at that time, on a monthly basis. The other thing we do is we do keep it fairly low, because we want parents that are interested in the family dynamic, not money. And that's another area where we're completely different than the rest of the world, it seems. When, when BC and Ontario here, we're paying for home stays, they laugh. There are some places paying up to $1,500, but on the other hand, they have the home stays that kind of show that. Our home stays, you know, most of you have had teenagers, 525, there is nobody doing this for the money. It's all because they want to learn about a culture. Another source would be the tuition. The NSISP collects over $12 million in tuition, and that's paid out at 875, or 8,750 to each school board. So in our school board, TCRSP receives a million, 1.1 million roughly, in additional discretionary budget funding, that they can then spend on things when, you know, we are the lowest-funded school board in the province. This goes in to help out in those areas where it might need a new roof, and it just isn't in a budget. So this is discretionary funding. Lately, they, because we are so poorly funded, they do turn to this money quite regularly to balance budget. We also send money directly into the local schools at a, at the 100, or $100 per month per student. So, we used to, when, when you guys had, I'm trying to think, Mr Churchill used to have his little, you know, he'd go and talk to his secretary, and all of a sudden, there's a kid that didn't have a pair of cleats, or someone couldn't pay for this, or someone was going to Liverpool to play basketball and lose, they would at least have some money to have a meal on the way back, and he would reach in and ask his secretary, you know, his little slush fund. Teachers, principals, schools do not have that anymore. There is no more discretionary budget for schools anymore. The only little extra money they receive is through the International Student Program. So that's at, so the schools in, the local area schools receive $60,000 from us, based on how many students they take. Dawn's doing very well, he's got about 47 students, so.
Wow.
The other money is, is what we, we would assume that spending, we tell the students to budget when they come, and when I travel, you know, we're always asked how much they spend, take for spending money, and, and these kids are amazed when I come up with numbers like $400, because they're expecting thousands. So we'll say $400, you know, if you don't, if you want to go to a movie once in a while, if you want to buy your own lunch, that's, that's $400. If you want to buy some clothes, you know, the latest fashions in Yarmouth, you know, $400 will do it, per month. And that money is being spent on entertainment, goods and services, transportation, and these kids, many of them, I mean, there, there are some stereotypes, but some of them are spenders. When you look at where they're from, they're, they're spenders. Most importantly, it, it's the academic side for us, and if you look at the, the pictures here representing the countries that participate in the program, it would be safe to say that two-thirds, no, every country here, with the exception of Macau, which is not a really a country on its own, has been in Yarmouth. So there have been interactions by students in different years, from people from these, students from these countries, because they're in the same classes, they take all the same classes as your kids that are going through the, the, the public system. One of the things that's been really good is because we were set up as a, to, set to diversify the education system, we've had this, this development where we see the world in thirds, Europe, Asia, and South America. Where other, if you go to, say, talk to people from Toronto, where the largest international student program is, 87% of their students are from China. And ten years ago, 80% of them were from Korea, because these were the areas that were sending the most, the highest number of kids out, and they were just going there and getting as many kids from wherever they could, but in this case, you know, the high senders that they could. We don't have that, that model at all. What we have to do is, we have to go to as many different countries, because we're trying to diversify our schools. And we're also trying to for, to force, excuse me, but we want the kids to integrate with our local students. And if you have ten Brazilians walking around Yarmouth Consulting Memorial High School, it would be a fun time, but there would be ten Brazilians walking around Yarmouth Consulting Memorial High School in a group, speaking Portuguese. With our program, you could have no more than six from any one country in a school. So we're forced to diversify. The, the greatest regret is that because of the visa issues and, and global affairs, we simply can't get anybody in from Africa yet. I mean, we're trying different ways, so we look at South America, Asia, and Europe.
So we can't get them from where?
Africa.
Oh, okay.
It's very difficult for a student, for a high school student to get a study permit or a visa out of Africa. Do I need to move that closer? Is that right? Closer. I was trying to use my soft melatonin voice. Jeff didn't like that one. Now I want to just, I want to brag a little bit about Yarmouth and, and the tri-counties. We're the largest per capita participant in the International Student Program. So Shignektow and Halifax have more students. Halifax has about 220. This year, we had approximately 180 long-term students. So per capita, we're the largest participant in the program, which, then the great thing with that is that students in tri-counties have a better chance of meeting somebody from Brazil, China, Europe, France, Germany, Colombia, than a student from any other place in Nova Scotia. We do, I do represent the entire province, and we do use schools in, from one end of the province to the other, we just bring more students in. And to the point where now, a, a high school student in Nova Scotia doesn't know what it's like to go to school with international students in their classroom. And when I went to school, like many of you, I didn't know what a Brazilian looked like.
No.
Since 2007, 2008, Yarmouth hosted over 400 international students, full-time, so really, there's been about 700, but they're not full-time equivalents. We've had full-times, and they've been from countries, you know, from Spain, Turkey, I could read them off, but I've seen, you, you guys have it, but from over 18 different countries. So they're, they're getting a great opportunity to learn about the world. I put up this picture, obviously it's fairly new, those of you that went to the, the night of, the night of Rome, the Italian night, what was it called? The fundraiser for the hospital three weeks ago?
Oh, yeah, the gala.
What was it? Gala? So they were doing Rome, and we had three Italians in the area, so they took part. Sofia served, and the two gladiators were Umberto and Enrico. And, and I hope they spoke Italian, just to give a sense of place and setting, but, so that's what we're trying to do, is we want to get students involved in what's going on in the community. Luckily, these guys were living with Tony and Patty Dorian, so they were involved, so they said, hey, let's bring some kids in. So why does stu, why would we do it? One is, and I feel this is kind of a bit misleading, because we talk about declining enrollment, and this isn't about declining enrollment, although when you look at the picture, it looks like it is. We, we really do need to diversify our schools. When you look at the elementary schools, and if you walk in through an elementary schools, we don't have a great deal of diversity. And so what this is doing, it's bringing in students from all over the world, and in the second picture, there, there are ten different nations represented getting on that bus. So the schools do look different at high school than they do at elementary, and I think that's a good thing in many ways. The other reason is that when you look at, here's a, this is from the Phoenix Research Institute, it's 2011, but they talk about the top 10 skills needed for 2020, so what our kids need to succeed. Sense-making, well, I've thought about that for a while, I'm still not on a mission, sure what that means, but I think it means you have to be able to make sense, but I think that always applies. But lately, they talk about social intelligence, and that's social intelligence bridging different diversities and different cultures. Number four is actually cross-cultural competence, the ability to work with other cultures, the ability to recognize that some cultures don't work the same, and be able to work with them successfully. And these are things that they're called, those soft skills that, that schools teach, that our students are now learning. And honestly, without the International Student Program in high schools, I don't think you could really, truly learn cross-cultural competencies. This is just pounding that point about the countries we're bringing in, and I'll get back to that later. The other thing that we've been able to do is, because we've been very successful, we were able to, to take some of our money and, and provide an environment where opportunities can be created for local students in schools, not just by bringing students in, but we can now send students out. There's a great YouTube piece that I was talking to Tina about, where Lauren Goudy was explaining the importance of her latest trip to Mexico. We have the international, we have a leadership program that takes place in Compeche, Mexico, that Lauren and, and two other students from tri-counties took part in. And if you, you go on Vanguard and look into this, this, this video that they've taken, to hear that seventeen, Lauren is 17, just 17, to hear her talk about the way she now thinks of the world, and what she wants to do, you know, in a humanitarian way, or how she wants to live her life, just in general, and how she understands the world now, just in general. Not about career goals, but just living her life, it's, it's, it's very surprising, and it gives you a real, a great faith in, in our students now. We have short-term programs where students will come here for three months or less. We have teacher internships, there was a wonderful, you know, they've gone on in Meadowfields Central, where teachers from around the world are coming in to, to teach in our schools with our teachers. They, they come to learn English and to learn how our, our teaching, our pedagogy, but what they end up doing is teaching an awful lot of culture, and we're, and now we're able to start bringing this, this cross-cultural understanding to lower grades through this program. There was a wonderful one in Meadowfields two or three years ago, that the, the teachers there still talk about, with a lady from Japan. We offer summer camps, school-to-school exchanges, where Brazil was here, I think they came in to meet you guys, they had a marvelous time. Leadership camp, which is what Lauren just took part in, the ambassador training program, where we actually take students out of our schools, and we take them in a five-day training program where they learn about intercultural disciplines and, and cultural communication and EAL, all kinds of things that are important for students to understand, when, when you're dealing with international students, but also just in life in general. And then the other thing that's happened is that we've also been able to offer EAL within the communities, a number of different communities. So this didn't make any sense to me until I was teaching high school, and a doctor who was thinking of moving to Nova Scotia, to Yarmouth, came to the school and said, you know, lo and behold, he had kids, and he wanted his kids to learn English. Well, oh, so his questions to me were all around at that time, what was called ESL, but EAL, and then about the chances his students would have, his children would have to learn English while going to school. Because we'd had the International Student Program for five years at that point, I could, I could respond to him very, very fluently within the area, and, and, and he was, was confident that this was the spot for he and his family. Fortunately, his wife didn't like it that much, so they left after three years. But I did my part. The other piece that I, I think is most important is about families. I just put up a, a picture of my daughter, and the daughter, and my other daughters, I guess, and the experience. I have an only child named Bria, and she's in the middle here with the, she's the blonde. And her opportunities through this program and, and from us hosting have been simply amazing. The, the example I've used before, she came home disgusted from school three years ago, she was in a class where the teacher was talking about different countries, and she's, and apparently the teacher was describing South America as a place where everyone speaks Spanish. So Bria didn't know what, she came in, she said, how do I explain to her that the largest country in South America speaks Portuguese and not Spanish? And as my teacher brain kicked in, I'm saying, what did she just demonstrate, like, about her understanding of the world in that? She didn't know she was demonstrating, and I don't, you know, those skills and those understandings. And I certainly hadn't taught her that, I didn't know Brazil spoke Portuguese until 10 years ago, so I can't take any credit for that. I can blame it on my three Brazilian international students that, that have lived in our home. And just, you know, here, of course, they have to pile wood, so there's a picture of a girl piling wood, and Mona from Germany, meeting Bria down here in the corner. The, the other one, the cool paint, I, I just think that's one of the most amazing pictures I've seen. This is one of the girls that lived with me from Colombia, from Bogota. And then up in the corner, that is actually Mona, and of course, just to shovel. Because when students live with us, they are not borders, they are members of the family. And our instruction to our families is you treat them as members of the family. So when I was a kid, I had to shovel, so I sent my 16-year-old to shovel. Most importantly, and I, I don't know if you guys know Jerry, Jerry Welland, he's the guy that brought HP Studios to Lunenburg.
Yeah.
And, you know, Jerry and I haven't spoken for 10 years, I, I sent him an email, said, can I use your picture and, and drop your name? And I'm pretty sure he replied. Anyway, about 20, 25 years ago, he, he, this British kid showed up to 21 years of age to play soccer for me, for us, on the soccer team I played on, and it turned out, he was a programmer, and he'd fallen in love with a girl from Caledonia, and he moved to Caledonia and wanted to play soccer, and luckily, because he's a great soccer player, he chose to play in Liverpool, and he's played, spent three summers there. And over those, the course of those three summers, decided that when he grew up, he wanted to settle in Nova Scotia. Later on, he turns out he's a really, really good computer programmer, and, and developed a few games for EA, Electronic Arts, and went on to develop this HP Studios, which employs about 160 programmers, and they're now in Lunenburg, the town of Lunenburg, in an old warehouse. Now, no one could say, when he stepped on the field, because he fell in love with a girl from Caledonia, the effect that was going to have on Lunenburg, but it's been lasting, and it's been exceptionally positive. And it wouldn't have happened if he hadn't met this kid from Caledonia when he was doing an exchange in Ontario, because he went to Waterloo.
So he sponsored HP Studios, the, the indoor soccer?
Oh, he loved, he's coaching that.
In Bridgewater, that's where I coach, it's huge.
Yes, they, they built, they built the indoor facility, they sponsor, and, and you know, that hasn't happened here yet, nor am I going to say, you know, if we support international students someday, the Jeremy Welland of China is going to move here. But you just don't know. And, and what we're doing is we're, we're taking the, the decision-makers of tomorrow, or actually, in some cases, the decision-makers of today, and their kids are coming here. And we're putting Nova Scotia and Yarmouth on the map and on the consciousness, these kids have never heard of Yarmouth, I'm, I'm sorry, or Nova Scotia, because nothing bad happens here. You know, you only hear about the bad places in the world. Nova Scotia is not in anybody's conscience, except for the kids that we bring in for the International Student Program, and to be honest, sometimes they come off the plane and still don't know where they are. But after a few months of living with our families and going to our schools and making friends, they, they end up with a, with a long-lasting impression, positive impression of Nova Scotia and what it offers. So that's kind of where I end. Why do students come? Have you guys ever been to Bogota, Colombia? This, yeah, this was, I, in my defense, this is a taxi, taxi strike, but, but the roads in Bogota and all over the world, they look like this. Nobody knows anybody, and everybody's mad at everybody. Basically, is a really good way to describe Hong Kong, Bogota, Mexico City, e- even Bonn and Berlin. You just, you know, everyone's kind of frustrated a lot of the time. And I didn't realize that until I had international students, and they said that their shoulders, they stopped getting the aches in the shoulders that they used to have, the, the tension aches, those start going away for some of these kids. And if you lived in, in Hong Kong or Beijing, they, they said, ah, I thought I was sick, I can breathe. These, these are real comments that kids come up with about wanting to come here. So they're coming here to change their lives, and, and they have a myriad of reasons. Some of them, it used to be, the Brazilians were sending them to, to avoid kidnapping, and this is the safest place to go. But now it's, it's kind of, it's gotten into, you know, things about the environment, things about the environment they live in. So they're looking at opportunities to take part in these Nova Scotian activities and a Nova Scotian life. And that's how our program's a little different, is, is a lot of the other programs are kind of boarding programs, you, you got Harry Potter underneath the stairs in a little room, and our program, they're, they're not. They're encouraged to get, take part in community activities, they're members of the family, they're, they go to the same class as everybody else, and that's unheard of in BC. So they're really, this is what we're selling when we go abroad, and it sells exceptionally well. It sells so well that this year, the American dollar helped a lot, we had to close March 28th. We usually stay out until July, we were full, over full, up on March 28th. Right now, we're probably have about 100 students on our books that we don't have a home for yet. It's a little scary feeling. So if anybody's interested, well, I got a kid for you. So how do we grow in Yarmouth? And we still can grow, the schools, we can grow in the schools. The greatest factor is, is good home fam, host families, and, and here we have Kim Sweeney, who's an amazing home state coordinator. If you know of anybody that's interested, please, we, we are really, a really strong program. If you talk to some of our parents, 90% of our host families come back, 95%, and I don't mean they're moving away or dying, I mean, they, they come back the next year and say, we'd like to host again, which I think is a pretty strong testament to, to what we're doing, that 95% of your neighbors that host are saying, we'd like to try that again. And, and really, what we'd like is just, you know, when the topic comes up, to, to talk about it, because obviously, you're, you're the decision-makers and people that can inform others, to recognize that the positive benefits we have within the community, and, and we'd like to be more. We're trying to get more involved in the community, we're trying to, to push out there more with the, with the community groups, different service agencies, schools, to, to try to get more out of bringing the students here. And provide, quite honestly, it's a, it turns into a better experience for students, the more that they can interact with different groups. So goodwill and cooperation. Any questions?
We're ahead there.
Good presentation, and I know my sister Marilyn had two Colombians, back-to-back, and absolutely loved it, and they ended up being part of the family, Marilyn's been to visit, and it was a great experience for everybody involved, but what about, has anybody, John, after grade, I know the ones my sister had, they were in grade like 10, but has it worked for universities? Has anybody came here and stayed and gone to, you know, St. Mary's, or St. Avex, or St. Anne's, or an Acadia? Have they, have they come and stayed?
More and more and more. I got to apologize, I don't, it's around 30% of the students that, that stay for a year will stay for university or come back for university here. So there's an organization called Edunova, which is designed to promote Nova Scotian, education in Nova Scotia, and they actually, they do tours where they come and get our students to take them to St. Mary's or St. Avex. The last tour went to St. Avex, we have another one going at St. Mary's. St. Mary's was the school that had done the best by it, right now, Dal is, is, is doing the best, and of the 15 students graduating this, this year, from our program across, no, sorry, 24, 15 of them are staying in Canada, and five are going to be going at other schools, but they've also applied for schools in Nova Scotia as their second shot.
Has it worked on, has it worked on the athletic side?
Well.
Is there, is there anything through the, the Athletic Federation of Nova Scotia that, you know, maybe you might want to go down to Brazil, or maybe go over and cherry-pick a soccer player, or go maybe down somewhere and cherry-pick a basketball player to come up? How's that work?
It's, it's worked really well for Yarmouth. The leading scorer this year for the Vikings was from Sweden, and one of, what's that? Yeah.
The entire league?
Yeah. Two years ago, a student that played soccer here went on to St. Avex on a $44,000 scholarship, and a volleyball player that lived at the Gaudys, Carlotta, went to Acadia on a full ride. Every, I, I hate to say it as, as a coach, but I got to say that one of the differences in a lot of the teams right now is who they get in the international draft. Yarmouth won Division II this year, the goal scorer was from Italy. From Italy, yeah. Umberto was the, the winning goal scorer, and he's from Italy. He was Gladiator number two. So, yeah, they're doing well, and that, that idea of an exchange, I, I've, other areas have tried it, I think Parkview took a basketball team to Europe five years ago, and it was, it was in part in connection with the International Student Program. So it, yeah, those things are working.
Just one question, one more. What about students going the other way? What's it? I know I had in these.
Students going there to study?
Going, students from Yarmouth going to, going to do an exchange program themselves.
You're hitting all the good ones, actually. You're hitting all the good ones, actually. That's one of the, um, one of the benefits that no one had foreseen, but, uh, now, there are students on a regular basis, uh, within Tri-County, I can't say every year from Yarmouth, that you will hear about, will be traveling abroad to either go to university or simply visit friends. Lauren's going to Italy next year. Uh, and I talked to Jerry Randall's Alexa, she's back and forth to Turkey. We, we have a number of students. I was actually in Colombia, uh, in Bucaramanga, Colombia, and I ran into Cody Robashow in a high school, high school there.
Wow.
I can't make that stuff up.
No.
So, there are more and more students that are saying, that, that are taking that gap year, or, or at some point going to visit. If, you know, when we look on Facebooks, I would say every year, from Yarmouth itself, there'll be two or three kids traveling to either a friend or host brother or sister, and, and students that are studying abroad.
Coming, coming over and learning the English is, it's huge. Like, it's so prestigious. So I'm in, I'm in Korea, and Haley, 'cause Haley was teaching English, second language there. But, but the signs on top of the skyscrapers are, say, "Learn English, learn English," and it's, it's a prestigious thing, so they wanna come and learn.
And just, I just, you know, I know I'm taking your time up, and I apologize, but I just wanna give you one other example. Uh, Joy, who, from China, um, her, her family were, or Bjork, we don't know what some of these parents do, but, um, she said that the, the sign that, the, the sign that she saw on the road that made her, first time she saw the word Nova Scotia, was our, one of the partners there who represents us in Nanjing, had put a sign up, and it was a, it was a Gucci, a, a limited edition Gucci handbag, picture of one. Um, and it said, "This, or send your child to Nova Scotia."
Right?
That, that was, that was-
That's great.
That was the advertisement.
Yep.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Works.
Yeah.
And they have, they have so much money.
Not all. We have a great scholarship program as well.
A lot of them have a lot of money, too.
We have a great scholarship program.
Good.
Any other questions?
Anything else for, oh, Sandy?
Thank you.
Um, I was just, a great presentation, by the way. Um, I was just wondering about, it says, like, any parents interested in ho- hosting. Do you have to have children to host?
Oh, no. As a matter of fact, some of the, some of the better hosts that I can think of are, um, I hate to use the term, empty nesters, or, um, people that, that have had no intention of having kids, but, but don't dislike them.
Don't dislike them.
Liking kids is really important.
Do you have any statistics on how many youth, like, come to Canada, and then, for schooling, and then they go to college, and then actually apply for Canadian citizenship to actually work here?
I don't, but it, it is tracked. Um, CAPSIC, the Canadian Association of Public Schools International, um, does track that, uh, because it, it, it's becoming more and more important. I can say that, that the students that stay for university will generally stay, um, unless their parents have their own business. Either stay for, to find a job, uh, after, that, that would represent almost six years in Canada at that point, if they graduate, and if they go on for a professional degree. Um, so by that time, they're, they're pretty comfortable here, and they, they generally will stay, unless their parents have a, a separate business or, you know, something they're going back for. I, I did help a boy from Turkey. Um, his family immigrated to Nova Scotia two years ago. Um, but they were on the agricultural ticket, I like to call it, so they ended up in Kentville. But if I know one, there's gotta be thousands.
Yeah, good stuff. Thank you, John.
Okay, you're very welcome. And before I go, Jeff wanted me to point this out. I've left you with, uh, fridge magnets, where this is part of our, um, Bring the World Home. It's a, a letter from a parent, but also, the, what Jeff was most impressed with is the, the middle pops out, and it turns into a frame on your fridge for your pictures of children or grandchildren. And then, we still have the other magnet to hold things up. So, enjoy.
Isn't it, isn't it funny what impresses him?
I didn't wanna say that, 'cause he was entirely gracious to me.
It's all right, we'll say it for you. John, thanks again.
Thank you.
It's, yeah, it's good stuff, excellent stuff. So, has he got his thumb drive? You got your thumb drive and everything, John?
Uh, no.
You're good? Okay. All right, so on to staff reports, the CAO report. Uh, okay, so I've got extension of enumeration deadline. Did you wanna speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, the report is attached, and if there are any questions about the, anything in the report, I'm happy to answer that. Um, the, just on the other item, uh, while you're formulating your questions, uh, the Returning Officer did ask that we extend the deadline for enumeration to June thirtieth. Uh, that would be more workable, and, uh, so that would require a motion of counsel.
Okay. Moved and seconded to extend to, uh, June thirtieth. Any discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried? That, that was it for that? Yeah, I have a question. What if we want some of these things to come off? I'm still looking at number one, that mitigating construction noise, like that?
Yep. Uh, that would require a motion of counsel.
Is that it?
Yep.
That we remove it?
Yep.
Anybody wanna make that motion? That's just one less thing to do. Okay, Madeline, anybody wanna second it? I'm talking about the, the first one there, the, the mitigating, that they're looking into mitigating construction noise and all those things. I, it's just something I- Oh, yep, CAO's tasks. Yeah, you, okay, go ahead. It's just some of these things-
Yeah, so specifically, that one arose, uh, at the time we were doing the Pleasant Street, uh, project. There were, there were some complaints, uh, about the impacts in the local area, uh, around the work. And it was a decision of council to, to come up with a, um, a bylaw, uh, to, to establish rules around that. Now, uh, we did look and found an example in New York, and staff were working with that. More recently, uh, there's been, it's been in the media, uh, Halifax has been looking at, at that issue, uh, particularly around all of the construction they have in the downtown and how that's impacting on, on nearby businesses. And so, uh, Halifax may actually be creating a, a more applicable model, let's say, to, to our circumstance. And so, that hasn't been a, um, let's say, a, um, hasn't been on fire, that issue, so it's been on there for quite a while. It probably is something that, that, you know, we should take a look at, and I don't mind leaving it there. It doesn't bother me if it doesn't bother you. You know, when we do projects, and we are, we are gonna do one hopefully this summer, that will go right through our downtown and up through residential neighborhood, and, you know, I, I, I hope that, uh, even without the bylaw, we'll be mindful of the impacts on people nearby, as, as we tend to be, but, uh, certainly by establishing standards, you know, it, it's clear to everyone what, what to expect.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds, but then I got no problem leaving it in that case. It's just sometimes, one or two people complain about something big and it ends up being a job. Go ahead.
Uh, Jeff, this was some time ago, and I remember the previous council. It was, uh, we were doing construction work, and there was a lot of complaints about tailgates, and that early in the morning, remember? The slamming of tailgates and construction starting before seven. I think that's what brought this on mainly, I think, a lot. And dust and all kinds of other stuff, so. And there was, yeah, a lot of concern about the dust up on, when we were doing the big project on Pleasant Street, yeah, so. I don't think it would hurt to, to leave it, like you say, and have a look at Halifax one, when it comes. It's, it's seventy-five percent done. All the work's pretty much been there, and you're just gonna do a follow-up, see what they do, so. Yeah, great, thanks.
Anything else on CAO's report? Okay. Fire Department report. Welcome, Chief.
Uh, my report has passed, and anybody had a chance to look at it, uh, Counselor Dennis coached me a little just before the meeting. Uh, and we chatted about some of the headings that you see there. Uh, some of those categories are hard to explain and, and remember in your mind, so, uh, she had a good idea about, uh, adding or sending you an explanation of every one of those headings, so that you can look at the heading and then have the explanation underneath it, and you can keep that document. I would send it to Linda, and she would send it out to us. So, uh, I think it's a good idea, and I'm gonna go forward with that. Okay? Uh, are there any other questions?
Anything else for the chief?
Just, just one, just one quick one, Chief. Uh, medical calls in April twenty-two. What, what's the extent of medical calls? What's that meant?
Uh, medical calls are anything that, that we respond to, uh, EHS calls us, or nine-one-one, one or the other, and we respond, and usually it's lift assist and stuff around here, 'cause we don't do MFR, so.
Okay, yeah, I just, it just struck me here when I, when I seen it. You, you get a lot of calls, tw- uh, January, February, March, April, pretty much all those months.
And it fluctuates. Uh, Counselor Dennis and I were talking about the actual, uh, natural cover fires and how, how that's going up. Well, that's going up because of the environment, so you're gonna see that rise over the next ten years, so.
Yeah, that's great. Great report, thank you.
Counselor Dennis?
Yes, we were talking about, uh, the medical calls and the grass fires and the, uh, motor vehicle accidents. All of them seem to be up quite a bit for four months compared to the whole year of last year.
Yeah, uh, we did speak on that. Um, the, the, the police have more data on that type of stuff, but a lot of it has to do with, uh, the accidents they're having, uh, drivers being distracted. Um, and, um, as an example, only an example, the cell phone law that came out. When it came out, the accidents went down. Now people are used to it, and they're starting to come back up again, so. But the, the police have more data on that. They, they keep that through, uh, Stats Can, so.
Good. Anything else for the chief? Good job. Keep it up. Thank you, Chief. Planning Department, probably nothing happening there.
Okay, so the report was distributed to you, um, in advance, so if you have any questions, uh, feel free to ask them now. Um, I, Laura Lee did ask that I highlight, uh, construction value is down. Um, but the actual number of building permits is up. Last year, we had some really large construction projects that, uh, commercial construction projects that have kinda skewed our numbers. So, this year, we've had more permits, but they're for residential commu- uh, construction, and they've been a little less. So she's added, um, at the back of your report, a little printout from our TS Plan System that kinda shows the breakdown of the commercial valley, of the commercial and residential, uh, construction values. Just if you're interested, you can take a look.
So, so I'm looking at the bylaw enforcement. Twelve dangerous and unsightly complaints. Are these, are, are people calling in, or are we actively? I, I just, I wanna know for my own, or are we actively seeking those? Because I take a drive-through town and I look, and I'm, I, I could go any evening and just write a list of at least thirty places that need, either need to be power-washed because they're so filthy or unsightly, or garbage in yards, all those things. So I just didn't know how, I don't know how it works.
It's a good question. I think the numbers that you're seeing that he's tracked, complaints he's received, I think those are actual complaints he's received, where someone's called in or submitted something where they're concerned.
Okay.
Um, he, he does actively go out and check out the neighborhood and, and look for issues, but I don't think that they're tracked here unless he actually has to take more action than putting some garbage in the back of his truck.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, Your Worship Caroline. Uh, good report as always. Um, now that I see we have Frank sitting behind you, just give us a little overview on, uh, Switch Open the Streets, and, uh, I'll have another question afterwards.
Sure. Um, so Switch is planned for June nineteenth. It's gonna be from twelve to four. We're gonna actually close down Main Street from eleven till five. Um, it's going to be from Collins to Cliff Street, and your cars are still gonna be able to move up and down Cliff Street. Um, we have gotten a crazy amount of responses from the public and people who wanna participate. My, I was just telling the mayor this morning, my phone, every time I walk away from my desk and come back, I've got three or four new messages from people who are interested in, in taking part. Um, so we're really excited.
So that's anything from people selling crafts to flea market to whatever, whatever, whatever?
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of organizations that just wanna promote themselves and get out there and talk about, um, what they do. Um, there's a number of retailers, people who just wanna try things out. One of the things I've been really impressed with is the number of, um, groups that want to fundraise, uh, for organizations within the town. So, there's a lady who'd like to sell dog treats and donate the funds to the SPCA. There's a couple of fundraiser barbecues that are gonna happen as part of Switch. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed with that, with Yarmouth, the, the, there seems to be something different in the town of Yarmouth where people are always wanting to help each other. And I was really impressed at the amount of people who just wanted to take part, but maybe didn't feel they needed to generate income from the event, so they're gonna donate it.
So Frank was saying, uh, you're gonna set up a basketball net, or there'll be a basketball net there? Couple, a little spot for ground hockey? Yeah, all those things, yoga? Yeah.
Yeah, we've been encouraging the organizations along the route, like, uh, yoga studio, the gym, YMCA, that if they wanted to offer some complimentary classes to try and generate some business, uh, as part of that on the street, to do that as well.
And then they got the music spread out, so the DJ would be in Alma Square, and then on the peripherals would be acoustic, so that they don't get mixed up, so it's all-
Yes, we actually-
Can we use the speakers? Can we use the speakers?
I think the one in Alma Square will be. Oh, not our town speakers.
No. So, yeah, we have a DJ who's gonna be set up in Alma Square. We've got a band that's gonna be set up by Swit- by SIP Cafe. And we have another gentleman who'll be playing guitar up by the YMCA. And we actually, at that, we've been, been encouraging anybody else who wants to do a music thing to wait until the next event, because we didn't want there to be too much noise. Um, but we're really excited about the amount of feedback that we've gotten.
Excellent.
And, and the other one, Caroline, good, and I think that's gonna be something that, how many more times, Frank, if everything goes well, on that, uh, date? How many more times do you think you can do this, uh, throughout the summer?
Every week.
Yeah, if people are that interested in feedback, it's a lot of the possible, it would be every Sunday? Be every Saturday, Sunday?
Good?
I keep saying every Sunday.
Good?
If it goes well, then-
Yeah.
So far, it hasn't been a lot of work for town staff. All we're doing is closing down the street and holding the, uh, umbrella permit for the vendors. Um, really, it's up to the public what they wanna do with their street, and they are very excited about the idea and have so many thoughts and plans that it's really exciting. I can't wait until the event comes and see everybody come together.
And the only other question, Your Worship, I went to the planning conference in Halifax, and it was, uh, excellent, uh, excellent meetings. Um, just, uh, can you give us a little overview, Caroline? Uh, you attended the Choice Housing Meeting. Can you give us a little overview on that, please?
Sure, so Denise Vacon actually spoke about, um, there, there was two speakers in that session. Denise Vacon was one of them, and she was there speaking about, um, why we need to have mo- uh, more variety in housing choices, and how planning can play a role in creating more affordable housing opportunities in your community. Um, and she did an amazing job. She went through all the numbers in Yarmouth and used Yarmouth as an example. We got used as an example a lot at that planning conference. I was, my head was getting big. Um, um, so I, actually, I have a feeling we're gonna get a lot of calls from other planning departments that heard about what we're doing and, and wanna see how we're doing it. Um, and the other speaker who was part of that session was Tara McGuire, and she's the planner for the Chester area. And she's doing, um, she just did her masters. She's graduating with me on May thirtieth. Um, and she just did her masters in age-friendly planning, and how that links in in creating more livable, walkable communities, and how that links in with affordable housing and, and, and all of that. So it was a really interesting session. Um, and I think Natalie actually is kinda talking about, she's on that same line of thought as well, um, later on today.
Thank you. Excellent. Twenty-sixth or something like that? Twenty-seven? Twenty-sixth?
Monday?
Yep, Monday. And I just found out I'm getting a award. I don't know what it's for, but that's exciting.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, Caroline, you meet bi-weekly, bi-weekly with the, uh, fire inspector, the building official, bylaw enforcement officer, and, and you're doing, you're doing great guns. Um, how far have you gotten through town? I know that you, uh, it was agreed that you would start with three, three units? That was the three rental units in the building that you were, that you were focusing on?
No, that was just the- That was just the fire inspector.
All right.
He's trying to do, he would like to do inspections of buildings that have three units. Previously, it was four. This kind of, this little task force that meets to talk about building conditions, we are acting on complaints. Any concerns? We've, because it's out there now that people know that we're doing this and we're trying to work with the community and help out where there's concerns about building conditions, we get, we do receive quite a large number of complaints. And we're actually, I can give, I can get the numbers for council because we track all of the complaints we've dealt with. And we had a really large list when we started about a year ago, and it has come down and we have a lot of closed files now that we're really happy with. So I can share that data with council, maybe for the next committee of the whole.
Good. Thank you. Good news. Good. Anything else for Caroline? Your lights on there, Madeline. Okay, good. Thank you.
Have fun on Monday, Caroline.
Yes, congratulations.
You can make it up Monday night if you come back.
Operational Services, Dave's not here. I don't know if there's any questions for Jeff on that. If there is, you let me know. Finance? I think we did, didn't we? Recreation?
I apologize I didn't circulate a report, but this time of year is go time for the Recreation Department. John Darcy and his facilities crews are going full out with outdoor facilities with the weather cooperating quite a bit in April and May. That puts a big emphasis on outdoor soccer, ball diamonds, and we are having a heck of a time chasing dandelions this year. So they are running rampant everywhere and our guys are pretty full, stretched out with minor baseball and minor soccer rep teams starting and intermediate baseball, the Yarmouth Gateways starting their season. And so lots of activity, tennis courts opening and memberships getting sold. And so lots of outdoor activity happening. With our, our summer program staff, our day camp coordinators, special event coordinators are, just attended a staff training session on Tuesday, and they're busy putting their summer programs together. We are looking at June the 9th as our opening registration day for summer programs to start on July the 4th. Officially, it's, our summer usually starts on Canada Day, July 1st, but as far as our, our busier programs with Yarmouth South Playground, Summer Fun Day Camp, Sports Camp, Lake Milo activities, July 4th is go time. So, and June is a busy month as well. We, we have kind of a kickoff to the summer is June the 3rd, Sneaker Day, where we encourage everyone to wear their sneakers to work and be active throughout that day. June the 4th, we have our Argyle-Yarmouth Geocaching Event held right here in council chambers on Saturday, June the 4th. So we're looking forward to 100 or so geocachers taking part in, in geocaching activity throughout the town. And we also have a scavenger hunt as part of that day's activities. And then, of course, Caroline mentioned the Switch Open Street Event, that the first one taking place on June the 19th. We're looking forward to that. And the response has been overwhelming and I think it's going to be something that's going to become a regular thing in Yarmouth.
So, so all of these things that are going on, we need in our calendar?
Yes.
Is that working? Like, so for example, anybody can come into town, whether they live here or not, but our visitors too should know that we have kayaks, canoes, all that stuff at Lake Milo. Like, are we making sure that's all?
Yeah, it's being compiled now. A lot of it has already been entered from the All Hands on Deck meeting.
Yeah.
But all the individual one-off types of events and activities, we have to line up instructors, facilities, dates and all that sort of stuff. So once that's compiled and confirmed, it will be passed on to the town calendar.
Natalie. Yeah, good. Okay. Thanks. Okay, Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, Frank. A number of youth and parents were wondering about Central School, the basketball hoops and nets up there. They're not in very good shape. Is there any way that they can be fixed up better?
That's, you know, that's usually maintained by the school board, but I can definitely look into that with their operations department.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Your Worship. Frank, the floats up at Lake Milo?
Yes.
The, you know, the wharf that you put out. Are they in good shape, bad shape, or, and when will they be put out?
They usually are put out by mid-June. We usually try to schedule staff present at the building when the docks are put out, because if we put the docks out, then that encourages activity outside. We've had a lot of vandalism. Lifeguarding starts on the Canada Day weekend, so we usually try to time that with staff, a staff presence there. So usually by mid-June.
It's, it's better to leave them where they are, is that what you're saying? So people don't...
So in saying that, we, we do it all in one. We put the dragon boats in, we get Yarmouth crane there to lift everything in. So with the weather cooperating a bit, we've, we may be starting some dragon boat activities a bit earlier, so they may go in a little bit earlier, but probably mid-June is a good, safe estimate.
So they're in good shape still?
They're in excellent shape. I was just telling someone the other day that was asking me about what we have for floats. At one time, the floats that we had were the...
Foam?
Foam stuffed up underneath. And basically, what would happen is that every year, it was a maintenance issue with, because the planks are sitting in the water.
That's right.
And they're, they're absorbing more water, rotting. And with the style that we have now that are sitting out of the water, we do still have to maintain and replace a few planks, but as far as the wear and tear, they've been excellent.
How's the ramp working out, the paved ramp?
We did have some shifting of the, so the paved boat launch is looking, working out great. I didn't have hardly any complaints about, usually we have complaints with people blocking access to the lake. I don't think I had a complaint last summer about that, so people are respecting the, and I think just because it's a dirt parking lot and they see the paved area, that it's, it's kind of a reminder not to park on the pave. So that is working out very well. But as far as the center dock, we did have some shifting, some freezing and thawing, and the center dock has twisted a little bit. So we are going to have to look at, looking into trying to get some of those repairs done. Difficult job with it being underwater and that sort of thing. But we've talked to a couple of people and a little bit of ice, ice damming, I think, and it's just caused the, a little bit of a shift.
Thank you, Frank.
No problem.
Frank, you mentioned Yarmouth South Playground. We were there for the opening last year, the ribbon cutting of the, was it Limitless Playground? Or remember the, we got some funding from Accessible Playground Equipment?
Yes, Enabling Accessibilities Fund, yes.
Yeah. What's the story on that?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I've been working with Chad LeBlanc a little bit on that. I don't have an update on that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, we've had some, some changes in that department. And so as we're getting our feet under us, things like that will get, will get actioned again. So we've had a bit of a lull there, not Frank's, not Frank's fault at all, but we'll get her, we'll get her done.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else for Frank? Good job.
Thank you.
Keep it up. Okay, Ms. Natalie. Age-friendly presentation.
If there are any questions on my staff report, did you want to do that first, Mayor Pam?
Yep, sure. Any, any questions for Natalie? We did the wayfinding signs this morning.
The banners.
The banners. Oh my goodness, they're nice.
They'll be completed installation, it should be, by tomorrow, tomorrow evening. So you'll be able to do a drive around town and take a look at what you approved.
They are, they're, they're beautiful. They are. They did such a good job. They're bigger than I thought. They're better than I thought. What's that? It was.
I wanted to just acknowledge our two interns, last committee of the whole in April. Sarah and Jasmine started then, and so this Friday, unfortunately, they leave us onto bigger things in graduation. But I wanted to acknowledge some of the great work that they've done over the last month in helping me. One is Jasmine was able to go into our website, update in the press, press releases. She also helped us with the, one of the actions that came out of the tourism stakeholder meetings to create the community calendar, which there's actually two components of that calendar. One is to identify community events, whether they're small or large, and the other one is to identify any civic events that come out of the town. You go onto the website under community, and then you'll see in that box, there's community events calendar. So she worked on that and many other things, including the setting up the press event that we had this morning. Sarah's focus was on to create a database that would identify our business mix within the town and also our occupancy information. So in the June Committee of the Whole, you'll see a different format for my staff report that will have more metrics, more review of incident number of, of actions that are being done in the different areas that I focus on. And I'll be able to share with you what our business mix is, what our occupancy rate is, and broken down by the different districts of the town. So it'll give you an idea over time what the effects of all of the things that council has allowed us to do, how that's making a positive effect, hopefully good trends. So that's to come for June's Committee of the Whole. So thank you to those ladies for helping me out.
Yeah, thank you, ladies. Natalie would keep you if she could.
Don't make me cry.
I know.
So in March, I had said I would do a presentation based on attending the Silver Economy Summit. So this is the presentation that I've presented, that I've prepared to present to you today. So the, the common basis in reviewing a lot of the age-friendly plans that I've been able to review from communities, not just in Nova Scotia, but within our lovely country, Canada, a lot of them are based on the World Health Organization framework. And so one of the things that they had put in place a couple of years ago is to stress the importance of building age-friendly cities and promoting active aging in communities. WHO established the Age Friendly Cities Initiative, which encourages municipalities to enhance and improve their services, structures, programs, and built environments for older population. I want to, I want to say that, you know, Yarmouth has already put in place a lot of the framework that we'll walk through very quickly because in the municipal planning strategy that Caroline is leading, that certainly has a lot of the framework in it. And in certainly in, in other stakeholders, what their initiatives that they're going through has the elements of that. The age-friendly planning framework that, that WHO has put together that a lot of people, communities are leveraging their plan on is to assist communities with the creation of enhanced livable environments for residents of all ages. So it's not just about a particular age group, it's about having a plan that makes it inclusive for anyone. That Global Age Friendly Cities Framework was, was launched a little while ago. So there are eight elements to the framework. One is, and I won't go through the details since you've got the explanation there as well, it covers outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, housing, social participation, communication and information, respect and social inclusion, civic participation and employment, and community supports and health services. So one of the things is, once we identify the framework, is I wanted to investigate what is the successful process that some of the communities have ever gone to create their plan. And one that seems to be successful and repetitive is a five-phase approach. So phase one would be basically a walk around the community, kind of do kind of an environmental scan of what is, what is there. Phase two is to do a conditions assessment in which the physical conditions of the town built environment is assessed based on an age-friendly checklist. So they have quite a long checklist of different elements that they look for and best practices. And that could be in your bylaws, your MPS, different planning and strategy documents. Phase three and four, I've kind of bundled them together. It's a two-phase project, process. Phase three, it's about public engagement. So this is where the actual community that's affected, they're encouraged to, to participate as well as working with different stakeholders. And part of that is then to work together to identify what does the vision of an age-friendly community look like, and then how does that translate to your goals and actions. And in the fifth phase is really putting together your plan and then finalizing that plan that translates into actionable items. And then priorities are established against those. So I wanted to also share with you an example of a community, they're out in... They're out in Alberta. And this is the vision that they had for their community. It was to be an age-friendly community in which residents of all ages and cultures and backgrounds feel welcomed and recognized for their contributions to the town and are encouraged to lead active, safe and enriched lives. I think that's a pretty common vision that we all would aspire to. I think the town of Yarmouth, they could use that to be representative. And then they take that and they translate that into goals. So you have your vision, and now the goal acts as building blocks forming part of the overall vision of the community. For each goal, there may be associated actions, and those actions come from the gap analysis to determine the actions. So I've just provided two examples. One is, a goal may be sidewalks, pathways and pedestrian crossings will be safe and accessible for all residents. And so what they identified from doing the community assessment and the other parts of the process is that the community identifies areas within the town that impedes mobility. So part of doing that walking around and doing that action list, they were identified, that's what they wanted as a goal, and these are the actions that they would specifically take against that one. The second as an example is aging residents will have the opportunity to obtain meaningful employment. So one of the actions is identify avenues for many aging residents that would like to continue to work but are unable to find employment options that fit their post-retirement lifestyle. So I wanted to comment, the, the goals and the actions aren't necessarily all championed by government. They are, they can be championed by many stakeholders within the community where those things fit. So these were, this is why it's a community collaboration. Our Nova Scotia's Department of Seniors has an age-friendly community grant, program, sorry. And it is really to, to create an age-friendly environment so that communities have a plan, so that they can realize the visions, goals and actions required against that checklist. The grant is available up to $20,000. There are some eligibility criterias with regards to what the grant, the, the plan should achieve. achieve. The process, I've done a little bit of investigation, last year's process seemed to go quite quickly, and it was a two-to-three-month turnaround. Currently, the grants, there are two grants, they are being reviewed by the Department of Seniors for consolidation. So right now, they're not accepting applications, but that should be coming out shortly, and I've been told that it will pretty well remain the same. So I want to bring you back to our town. So, this is by no means a complete list of stakeholders that, that are active in this area, but I wanted to share that these are all of the different stakeholders that have different lenses within our community on the same population, age-friendly. And I also wanted to share from our economic community profile that we did a year ago, 37.3% of our population fall into the, what they consider the age-friendly category of 55 years to 85 years plus. And of that, 22% of them between the ages of 55 to 74 are more than likely working, very active, volunteering, and part of our community. So, these are, these are resources to be harnessed, and that, that will certainly grow. If you look at the numbers on the chart, as, as we start to age, that number will increase. One of the things that's been happening in parallel over the last couple of months, coming out of the Silver Economy Summit, is I had the opportunity with councillor Madeline Dawes to meet Anne Corbin, who is part, is the Director of Community Links for Nova Scotia. And so she was creating an opportunity for the region to put together, which, what was coined People's School, but now it's being called Let's Talk 55+ I believe, right councillor Dawes? And so, we're working towards supporting them as, along with SEEN, the Silver Economy Engagement Network, out of St. Mary's University, to hold a seniors workshop in Yarmouth. The target is early September, and potentially, this could provide us with an opportunity through the World Cafe to get some feedback as to what, what seniors would be looking for. So, in ending, I just leave you with this statement for, for council to consider, direct staff to provide recommendation for decision to council with budget consideration for the development of an age-friendly plan for the town of Yarmouth. Thank you.
Thanks Natalie. Any questions?
Is that a motion?
No?
No.
It's a suggestion. Go ahead councillor.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. The budget consideration, Jeff, what do we do in a case like that? We've already went through, we're still going through a budget process. Only in the process. Okay, so we're not committing anything right yet here?
You can refer something to the process.
So it's, she's looking, you're looking for a motion to have that directed to staff for budget consideration? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, this is, this is a suggestion, that if you would like me to bring a recommendation to council, I would, I would.
Okay, I'll just leave it at that then, thank you.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you worship. Great report Natalie.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to, to the ongoing, ongoing evolution of this. I know that we, we are in the middle, we're right in the middle of budget considerations right now, and it's so tight, it hurts. However, not to even suggest that we're gonna waste your time, but I would, I would recommend that you, I'm sorry, I would direct you to provide a recommendation for us, if you would give us, give us rough numbers that, and expectations that we would be looking at, that we could consider.
That would, that would be fine. I, what I would do is find out whether the $20,000 was a straight-up grant, or whether we had to have any participating dollars with that. So if it's a 100% grant that basically pays for the, the process and the consultant, then basically, there could be a zero impact to the budget. So that's something that I need to, to confirm.
So, I will make that motion.
Could I give you a second before, second? Okay. Is that it? Is that the, you're making that motion? Okay, so that means you're just gonna come back to us with a number?
Correct.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor. Aye, contrary. Motion carried. Thanks Nat. Okay, request for decision easement Belmont Crescent. CAO?
Thank you worship. So we have a situation that's taken way longer than, than we would have liked, but in the process, we've learned some things and clarified some things. And so, we own a piece of property, two pieces of property as it turns out, on Belmont Crescent, where the playground, the what we call the Havelock Playground is located. And we were approached by owner of 17 Ellis Road for an easement, so they can connect to municipal sewer and water services off of Havelock Drive, rather than having to extend those services down Ellis Road. The rationale being it would be much more cost-effective, and this is not unprecedented at all. All we would be required to do here is to agree to provide the easement, and that easement would be provided to the property owner at 17 Ellis, and they would be responsible for all costs of connecting the services and reinstating the excavation across the quarter of our land.
Go ahead, Danny.
Thank you worship. Jeff, you sent out an email on this, and I, I did reply to your email about the easement on this one. And in light of that, I would make a motion that we go with the recommendation of the CAO. It is recommended that council provide easement across the north corner of Lot 71 Belmont Crescent for the purpose of permitting a lateral for the municipal services to 17 Ellis Road. That would be my motion.
Seconded, moved and seconded, any discussion Caroline?
Just like to ask a favor. So he'd like to start developing, building on June 6th, and the next council meeting's not till June 9th, so if we could.
We can go afterwards.
Have a council meeting after this, that would be perfect, 'cause I can't issue the permit until it's registered.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Anyway, that's my motion.
Yep, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor. Aye, contrary. Motion carried, Lynda, somebody remind us to do that? Okay? Okay, good. All right, so the, you know what, we can take this right off. The only thing I was gonna say is we gotta find a way to make this happen. Oh yeah, go ahead.
So, just, just on that, I sent an email on this topic earlier this week or last week, I'm losing track of time. The, the gist though, is, is that the avenue that has been available for these sorts of requests of government for legislative change, that, that opportunity traditionally has been through the UNSM resolutions process, which is going to be different this year, and so there won't be that laundry list of resolutions. So I think if we want to affect change on the legislation, that it has to be something that we initiate ourselves, and do the other process that is kind of traditional, which is to then reach out to, to other municipalities, telling them what we're asking for, and asking them to indicate their support through a resolution of their councils, and to share that information back to us and to the minister responsible for the Motor Vehicle Act.
Okay. So what do you want us to do from here, to get that on going?
So the, the resolution that, that we had brought back in 2011 to the UNSM was to, to amend the Motor Vehicle Act to allow municipalities to designate specific roads within their jurisdiction where off-highway vehicles, properly licensed, registered, and operated, would be permitted to operate in the, in the street right-of-way as, as other vehicles. Presently, that's not the case.
Okay, so we wanna make that motion?
Yep.
Okay. Who wants to make that motion?
As, as long as Lynda has the wording down.
Yeah. Okay, and then I'll make some contact with the minister. Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion?
Can we read the motion again please?
So it'd be to request the minister responsible for the Motor Vehicle Act to amend the act to permit off-highway vehicles, properly licensed, registered, insured, and operated, to operate on designated streets, streets designated by a municipality within their jurisdiction for off-highway use. And so the, the off, I'll tell the story after the motion here, is, the gist is so the, so we could designate.
One or more.
One or more streets, portions of streets, and they would operate along with the regular traffic.
Thank you. Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor. Aye, contrary. Motion carried, Clean Energy Pace Program. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll just begin this, and Caroline may have something to add. We had brought the, the Pace Program through Efficiency Nova Scotia to your attention, to which you requested a presentation, which we had at the last committee of the whole. And there was a motion, I think, that we, that we bring it back to this, to this meeting for, for discussion. There really were no specific questions put to staff in terms of what you want to know, what further information you may want. So I guess we're kinda looking for direction, and if, if there's more information you need, if you could be kinda specific, and if you're not interested, indicate so. If you are interested, then we couldn't, we can make a specific recommendation around that.
So if I want a heat pump in my house, I can apply?
Well, I'm gonna stop you there, 'cause it's not quite how it works. The Efficiency Nova Scotia, Amy Brown, she'd be our representative, she will work with, if council's interested and wants to sign up for the project, before, she, this just gets opened up to the public. She's gonna sit down with council and find out how much you are willing to loan per household, what kind of energy-efficient products you are willing to loan money for, and what kind of interest rate you would like to charge. And I believe what happens is we adopt a bylaw around the program. So part of signing up for the program is that we would have her expertise in deciding all those things, so what kind of product they would like to have.
Okay. But this isn't just for, I probably should have read more. This isn't just for low income?
No.
This is for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, that works for me.
I mean, what's really cool is that it's an opportunity to help residents in our community invest in their properties and, and make them better, which is something, I mean, well, right now, our residential permit construction's up compared to previous years, but we don't see a lot of people investing in their homes in Yarmouth the way I think we'd like to, and this program might be an opportunity to encourage that kind of investment.
Okay. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you your worship. Caroline, I am reading here that they're looking at, they're gonna be offering this to 25 municipalities over the next two years, based on first come, first served. And even if we were to say, hey, yeah, we're interested, come and explain this to, to us, chances are, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't even be seeing this happening until end of the year, or maybe early next year, is that right?
I think we were the first municipality to request her to come present. I think there's other municipalities that signed up already. But I don't think she's anywhere near her quota, so I think we're probably would be on the top of the list if we made a decision quickly.
And when would we, when would we then roughly expect her to, to, to come?
That's a good question, I think it would be.
No pressure, I'm not putting you on the spot.
I think it would happen, I think it would happen quickly, that's the impression I got from her.
All right, well, I believe that, I believe a lot of people would be interested in this, and I would make the motion that council invite Amy Brown of Efficiency Nova Scotia to present to committee of the whole, and the property assessed Clean Energy Program, and the Pace Program as recommended by our town planner.
So Amy already presented?
Yeah.
That, this was, this was the recommendation that was put on the committee of the whole?
Then I missed that one, I'm sorry.
In April, yeah.
Yeah.
So, at this point, we're just looking to find out what else council would like staff to do, if you're interested in the program, if you need more information, if you need something else from Amy.
I missed that one. Didn't see her.
You did? I thought you were here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Otherwise, I would not make, I would not make the motion.
Yeah, but the next piece is, the next piece is for us to, to sit down and say, this is how much we're, it's the money piece. We're willing to put up so much money.
Well, the, the next piece would be if we're willing to do it, and if we're willing to do it, then she would, we would sign up and she would come and help us decide what would make sense for our community.
All right. Go ahead, sorry.
My only concern is that, I, I have heat pumps in my house, I have heat pumps in my house, and I, I, if I wanna do renovations or anything to my place, either I've got the money, or I go to the bank and get the money. I guess what we're, we're looking at is becoming the bank for the town's residents of Yarmouth. Now, I, I don't know if that's part of council's mandate that I signed up for, I'm not really sure if it is or not. I don't know how that fits in the MGA, being a loan, loan institution versus, the banks are a loaning institution. I know it's, you can word it any way you want, and I know it's probably a real good thing, but there's always complications and there's always the unforeseen that could happen. And I know she's gonna come and stare us and tell us the things to do, and what you have to do, you have to put liens on people's houses, this, that, and all the other stuff. That seems like a hell of a lot of work to, to a staff that are probably, a lot of them are overworked as it is now. I don't know how Jeff feels about this, but I, I have a, I have a different, have a different take on it, I have a different look at it. I know that there's, there's different organizations and there's different companies that have plans out there for these heat pumps, but it's not only heat pumps, it's for windows, doors, and all the other things, isn't it?
It'll be whatever council.
Yeah, whatever council, whatever council wants. So, I, I got somewhat of a problem with it. And the problem that I have with it is more of we're becoming a loaning institution. Now, I might have it all wrong, or I might be way off, but I don't think, I don't really think that I am. That's, that's, what I'm reading here in the presentation she gave, that's what hit me, first of all. I wanna do the best for our citizens of, of the town of Yarmouth, but I also wanna be fair to the citizens of the town of Yarmouth as taxpayers. And I know that I could go to a bank and probably get what I need for windows and doors, and up to a certain amount, like anybody else, rather than coming to the town. But then, if I could come to the town at a, at a discount rate, that might be all well and good, but then, in the end, if I can't make my payments or, or be able to pay because of the downturn or whatever, or illness or sickness, then it's a different kettle of fish, although it's the same as any bank or institution, so. But I'd rather, I'd rather much see the banks, or whatever, take my house than, than the town of Yarmouth take my house, I guess. Anyway, that's just my thought.
So, this, this program's coming about from some changes that were made to the MGA. It was actually done to the Halifax Charter first. HRM offered the Solar City Program, if you've heard about that, and it was an opportunity for municipalities to loan out money with interest. So that's, we, we weren't, municipalities weren't allowed to do this before, and now they are, it's something that is within, is something that you are able to do and allowed to do, if it's something that you're interested in. From a staff perspective, this won't be a burden to town staff in any way, the program's completely run by Efficiency Nova Scotia staff, which is amazing, so we would actually have their full support down here, all the materials, everything is paid for and offered by them. From a loan perspective, the municipalities that I've heard, who have offered this program, particularly HRM, this was an opportunity for them to actually generate revenue. And in addition to that, because these are investments in the property, it actually increases property value, which can help with tax revenue as well. So it's, it's a really great opportunity for municipalities to get involved. It is complicated, and it's a new thing, but that's, I, I have confidence in, in Amy Brown and her staff. It is complicated and it's a new thing, but that's, I, I have confidence in, in Amy Brown and her staff with Efficiency Nova Scotia. They know what they're doing, they've done the research. So if we did have concerns, I think they should be able to address them or answer your questions.
And, and I'm sure, sure she will. She, she was very, very knowledgeable once she gave the presentation. I understood everything she was saying, but I still have those concerns. But my, my, my other question is, for her services, is she being paid for her services, the Efficiency Nova Scotia? Do they charge?
So, the program costs about $15,000 a year to administer and that includes her, her salary per municipality. The first year is covered by the province. They're actually paying in advance for those 25 municipalities that they're offering this out to on a first come, first served basis. So we're getting her services completely for free if we wanna start up the program. After that, they're estimating that it would be about $9,000 to run the program in additional years and they feel that that would be completely covered by the interest that you'd be receiving as part of the program.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Good, so where were we? I know, but did we make a motion?
No.
No, okay. All right. So, I would entertain a motion to support the, yeah, to support the program and have-
Participate.
To participate in the program. That's as simple as that. To participate in the program and then we would have her come in and, okay? Wanna make that?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary?
Aye.
Motion carried. Tender full-size truck. Thanks Caroline.
Thank you.
Thank you Worship. We, we invited five local automotive dealers to tender on either a lease or outright purchase of a 2016 pickup truck for the Parks Department. And two responses of the five invitations and the details are provided there. And the engineer is recommending that we go ahead and purchase the truck from Tusken Ford, the lowest bid in the amount of $30,436.38 plus HST. And that's for your information. And just to give you the rationale why is that we've been, we were short a truck. We've now got, we're back up to having full, three full-time supervisors within operational services. We had two, so we're short a vehicle and this is just filling that void.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary. Motion carried. Moving roses, Councilor Dawes? Oh, Dani was on.
No, no, I wanted to answer the question, what she said.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. My motion is about the roses down at the corner of Main and Argyle Street. And that is the roses at the northeast corner of, these are the wild roses. The northeast corner of Main and Argyle Streets have become a catch-all for debris. Directing staff to remove and replant them wherever they're needed in town. If I have a second or I'll, I'll, I'll explain further. Thank you. The residents around, around the area down there, they have been picking up from time to time. They pick up the debris and, and the bags, the paper that flies around. Because it is a very windy corner. But the thorns are getting bigger every year and the rose bushes are getting thicker every year. And they have asked now for the second year in a row if the town would and could remove those roses and not plant anything else. Just, 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 just leave, leave the tree there. And, and that's the story behind it, thank you.
So they're asking, they're asking?
They're asking that those roses be removed, yes.
Thank you Worship, well, I, I won't be supporting that, that motion because them, them rose bushes been there for probably 15 to 18 years. I never heard anybody complain, I've sitting around this table for the last 13 years. Rose bushes we have all along Water Street that gather debris. The other plants that are down there, walking by there every day as I usually do, they gather debris. Lobster Rock Wharf, you wanna see debris, there's where you wanna go and there's not a hell of a lot of rose bushes there. But you, you could pick anyplace in the town of Yarmouth that we have flowers or rose bushes or whatever and you'll see debris. I don't think we should haul out plants and whatever. I think perhaps we should educate people not to litter. Perhaps we put a sign there instead of hauling up the rose bushes. They've been there a long time, people just gotta stop throwing trash, that's all they gotta do. To haul those rose bushes out there, it's been there for 15 to 18 years, I think it's a shame. And I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't listen to what, I don't know how many people, I'd ever seen any petition or anything like that saying, hundreds of people that live down there say haul these bushes out. I've never heard of it. And nobody's come to me and I, I know a lot of people that, down there, I've lived down there for 64 years. And, I mean, this, they've only been there 15, 18 years. But you can walk anywhere in the town of Yarmouth. Any side street, any street, down Main Street, you'll see lots of garbage, lots of trash. I think people need to be educated. I don't think we oughta start hauling plants up. If we're gonna haul those plants up, we oughta consider hauling all the rest of them up around town. In the aisleways, going out to the 103, the 101, going up Vancouver Street. You gotta have a hard look at them, you just can't single out just one particular place. There's trash, lots of trash and litter, but we have employees that get down and take out the, you know, that they take out the, the garbage and everything that's down there. They usually go around, pick up stuff. Counselor mentioned yesterday, in her, her comments yesterday, if people had a bag, go around with a bag once in a while and pick up trash, that, that's a good idea, perhaps you should do that. And other people should do it, she had a, she had a good comment there yesterday. But anyway, I won't be supporting that motion and I don't think we should be hauling up any of our flowers or rose bushes because of a few bad people that, that don't adhere to the, you know, the litter bylaws. If you're gonna do anything, plant a sign there, please pick up your litter. And maybe a lot of other places, maybe down on some of our wharfs and some of our walking areas. And not only that, and, you know, we, we have lots of litter around town. Dog litter, you name it, we got it. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Okay. We got a mover and a seconder? Any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Contrary? All right, and picnic, yeah, no, it's, it's, you, you can only ask, that's fair. Picnic table, Councilor Dawes?
I'm afraid to bring it up.
No, don't be afraid to bring it up. It's a good one.
I'm just bringing it up here. The staff include providing a minimum of at least one picnic table with rear, with wheelchair roll-up access in a public outdoor space as part of the Town of Yarmouth's age-friendly plan being prepared for the Nova Scotia Department of Seniors Grant Program.
Do I have a seconder? Moved and seconded, discussion, go ahead.
Thank you Worship, I think it's a great idea, but I think it doesn't go far enough. Perhaps we could have our staff look at how many, how many picnic tables, you know, if, if need be, in different areas. Not only, not only just for, for this wheelchair roll-up access one, but do we have an inventory of picnic benches or, and, and seating benches? Do we have an inventory of those, Jeff, do you know? Or is that Parks Recreation or is it just Parks? Do we have a, do we have an inventory on, like, on, on what we have for seating? What we do have for picnic tables? I know, 'cause there's, there's a request out all the time for, for picnic tables. And I don't, I don't know how many wheelchair roll-ups access ones you would need or where you would put that. It would, I mean, we have lots of parks, I even forget how many parks we got, there's so many parks. I, I lose, I lose sight of them and I lose the numbers. They, they, I know we've got more than several, so some people don't think we do, but we do. And seating, we don't have enough seating in different areas. So I'm just wondering how many we do have. Is that possible to get a count of seating and benches? And what we have on hand and, and is there any plan to expand them? And if there is, where they could be expanded to? I'm not saying this year, but, you know, perhaps down the road. Is there a plan in place for adding more or newer ones or maybe not so much wooden ones, more, you know, environment-friendly ones that hold up to the weather we have around here? That, that's my question.
You can look into that? Okay, so-
That's a lot.
It's, it was relatively simple, you just said a lot. That's all right. So let's go back to the motion, which is, which is, I think, separate from what you're asking, but it's looking for a minimum of one picnic table. So we could put one or we could put 10, depending on, you know, how, how much space we have, how much money we have.
Yeah, well, we could also, we could also consider just, 'cause I, I see, I saw today, driving past Beacon Park, that staff was out getting the, Frank, you can help me out with the, with the kids, the kids play, play? Help me out?
Chad was redoing the play structure.
The play structures, thank you. Yeah, and I saw a couple of, a couple of few picnic tables out there. And I thought, we don't have to necessarily go out and purchase one of these beautiful, made, made specially for picnic tables. But if we could possibly consider even taking one or two picnic tables that are around in public spaces and one side of a bench, we could just cut that, half of that off to allow someone to roll up with, in a wheelchair and perhaps even that could be used during our summers, our switch-open-street summer Sundays.
We need this, we definitely need it.
There are a lot of people out there, I don't have a petition.
You don't need a petition.
But there, there are a number of people out there who do feel that, why bother taking their, their family out in the wheelchair? Because there just is not enough accessibility for them to, to take part in social activities.
Well, it's a good step towards the age-friendly plan too. Okay, so any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary. Motion carried. Picnic table, that one came out, okay, action. ARC presentation request. So do we need a motion to say yes to this? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion, Jim, that the ARC present to us for their ongoing plan, seconded by Sandy.